2020 and at 7:00 PM. In accordance with Governor Holcomb's Executive Order 2004 issued March 17, 2020, and extended by Executive Order 2044, council members had the option to participate in today's meeting using an electronic device. That means that any member who chooses to participate electronically must use an electronic device that permits simultaneous dialogue with the other members who are also participating in this meeting.
We have one person taking advantage of the governor's order. Clerk Treasurer Jenny Pierce is on the phone.
Okay. And Mr. Peter, the president, had surgery today, so he's not here tonight. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be advised that the Danville Town Council met in executive session immediately prior to this meeting to discuss matters of pending litigation. That's where we came from. First item of business is approval of the minutes from the work study held on September 16, 2020. We will take comments from the council.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the work study.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would the clerk treasurer please take a roll call vote?
Greg Van Leer?
Aye.
Levitt?
Aye.
Thurs?
Aye.
Gerald?
Aye.
All right. Four people said aye. The motion has passed. The next item of business is approval of the minutes from the council meeting on September 16, 2020. We'll take any comments from the council.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the council meeting on September 16. Would the clerk treasurer please take a roll call vote?
Greg Van Leer?
Aye.
Levitt?
Aye.
Thurs?
Aye.
Chris Gerald?
Aye.
All right. That motion passes also, and thank you very much. Now it's time for public comment. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to be heard?
Madam Vice President, Greg Tournay has turned in a request to speak to the council.
Okay. Mr. Tournay.
Good evening. I think most of you know me. I'm Greg Tournay. I live at 1109 Judith Lane. I'm also a member of the Host Future Fund Committee for the town, and I want to speak to you guys about that tonight. I'm not speaking for the committee as a whole, but I have had some discussions with the other two committee members that are not affiliated with the town as a staff member or a council, and they've pretty much got the same opinion of what I'm about to say. As you guys know, the council usually moves a portion of those monies that we receive from Waste Management into the Host Future Fund to invest, and I think historically that's been about $200,000 a year. This fund's unique to Danville, and I think there's only one other town in the state that has this fund, and it's a huge asset for us, and it's something that we need to preserve and grow for our future. To date, the council's not contributed to this fund in 2020, and after going through the budget earlier this week, I don't think it's in the 2021 budget either. If that's just an oversight, you know, I think it's something we need to do. If it's not an oversight and it's being viewed as an expense, then in fact it's an investment and it's an asset that we're always going to keep, so I feel like it's something we need to continue doing. There's going to be a day that the landfill closes, and we've had these monies every year to use in the current budgets, and that's going to dry up and no longer be able to be used. So I think it's imperative that we continue to make these contributions into the fund so it can grow into a amount that someday will be sustainable so we can draw off of it after the landfill's closed. And if we're really successful, we could probably operate it close to an endowment, and that's something the town is going to have in the future. The way that we're growing, I know there's hesitancy to probably move money this year with this pandemic, but money's at an all-time low. By a conservative estimate, I think we're going to have 1,000 new houses in town in the next six to eight years, and those are just all reasons that we need to continue to grow this thing and put it to where it's something that we're all going to be able to use in the future. So I think for the future of the town, it's the best thing to do. So that's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Vice President, can you give me just a second for possible rebuttal?
Sure.
Thank you. Jenny, do you want to respond to that, or would you like us to?
I would like to.
Okay. Thank you.
Every year, $200,000 is received into the Host Future Fund. We receive quarterly payments, of course, from Waste Management. We receive $200,000 into the 710 Fund, which is the Host Future Fund. It doesn't even go into the Host Fund, which is 709. It was just an oversight that that money hasn't been transferred yet this year. It is going to be. We are taking care of it, and it's always allocated to be done. So it will be done next year. It's always done in February. We, like I said, are in the process of doing it, so it's nothing that the council has to vote on or do. It's part of what we do annually.
Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you, Madam Vice President.
Does that make sense? Does anybody have any questions?
Jenny, I just have one. It's Greg Van Leer. Do you have an ETA of that transfer?
In the next couple of weeks. It will be done by the end of October.
And does that show up even as a line item in that Host budget, or is that all separate?
No, it won't. It's a whole separate fund, so you won't see it because we receive it into 710, which is a separate fund than the Host Fund. There's the Host Future Fund, which is where you see, you know, the investments and everything that when you get your reports and you go down through your cash allocations, there's 709 and then there's 710. And that $200,000 is automatically received to the 710. It never touches the Host Fund, the 709.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak tonight?
Can I ask one?
Oh, sorry.
Greg, you mentioned that will dry up. Any estimation on how much longer we have on that?
Well, the question that remains is how long's the landfill?
Right. Exactly.
How long's the landfill operates, how's receiving those funds, make sure portions get put into this. Once the landfill's open, guys aren't going to sleep.
But we don't have any clue as to how long that...
Maybe only 12 hours.
Okay.
The last meeting that we had...
I've heard 20 years.
18.
18, okay.
And again, Jenny, if I'm reiterating your point, this actually isn't a council matter. It actually goes into that fund automatically. It just didn't get converted this time, right?
Crap.
All right. Let the record show that Mr. Tournay was saying that, you know, there's not really a time that we can know for sure how long the landfill is going to be here, but I know I've heard 18 to 20 years, and that's what other people have heard too. Okay. So was there anyone else from the public who wished to speak tonight?
I didn't receive any other requests.
Okay. Thank you very much. Now, the public meeting has begun, and the first item on the agenda is Item A, a bid opening for paving project, County Road 150 East.
Madam Vice President, I'd like to introduce Joe Miller from Banning Engineering. We had the bids going to... We had them sent to his office so that we could put these together on a more timely basis.
Joe Miller with Banning Engineering. We received five bids, and I will proceed with opening those up now. This first one is from... Actually, I'll just do them in order. First one's from Baumgartner. Come on, guys. Baumgartner, their base bid is $349,839.50, and their bid alternative is $114,100. And just so the council knows, this is a... I don't know if I'd call it unique, but working with Alby and Barry, the bid alternative is some drainage work on the side, side ditching, that the town has... I'm trying to speak for you guys, but we... The town agreed to at some point during the process of this road for the contractor to demobilize, the town to come in and use their resources to do some of the grading work there, and then the contractor comes back and finishes the job. So it would be a cost savings potentially for you guys. Grady Brothers. This is a really well-sealed envelope. 180. And the last one is Milestone, another very well-sealed envelope. Milestone came in at $396,000. Wait. I think they're missing a zero. I'm pretty sure it's 396,000, but honestly, I'd have to do some math to figure it out. And the bid alternative is $79,340.
Madam Vice President, given the timeframe of this project and the way these companies are taking projects, obviously, is I'd like permission to work with Banning Engineering, find out our lowest, most competitive, make sure we have the proper funding. If we don't have funding, we can turn around and reject these bids, obviously. And then if we can come up with a consensus, I'd like permission to go ahead and sign Friday. I think that's the deadline we had put forth. Is that correct?
Yeah. We were trying to get the contractor started, so as soon as they got bonds, which would be hopefully next week, they could get started immediately, so.
I need the council's permission for me to be the representative to sign that contract.
Do I have any comments from the council?
I just have a question. Can you go over what the difference between the bid and the alternative bid is again?
Yeah. So the base bid, so as you guys all know, County Road 150 is in pretty bad shape, and I can...
Yeah. I got a...
Yeah. So, yeah, it's in some pretty bad shape. So we're going from County Road 75 South all the way down to County Road 200 South. So it's a little bit over a mile and a quarter. The base project is the contractor's going to come in, obviously set up traffic control, and mill off three inches of pavement. And just not to get too much in the weeds, but essentially that top layer of pavement is popping off, okay? So it's a big deal. That's a big problem. That's why it looks so bad. After they get done, well, actually, first they're going to patch it. So about 10% of the road has some subgrade issues where the pavement underneath and the subgrade underneath that needs to get repaired. That'll get done first, then they'll mill it off. That's when the town comes in and grades off the... regrades the side ditches and the shoulders areas. They're going to take that material and take it away to get positive drainage. That's one of the major issues you have here. You've got the trees here that don't allow sun in, and the water... It rains on it. It doesn't dry up, and then it's built up over time. The shoulders are built up, so the water just kind of sits on the road. That's your main issue, why this has deteriorated so quickly and so poorly. So once the town comes in and does the shoulders and the side ditches, then the contractor come back and put in two inches of surface on that and then put some striping on it as well. I did get word from the contractors that they are fairly certain the permanent striping may have to wait till next year. They'll put some temporary stuff in just by scheduling. The contractors are so busy that they're not going to be able to get that done most likely, so. But does that explain... So the alternative is essentially, and I forgot the last part is, and then the town's going to come back, use the millings that was completed, that was taken off, and put in a two-foot shoulder along the side as well. So that's... So the town is regreting the shoulders, side ditches, coming back in and putting in the millings as a shoulder later.
So what I hear, and correct me if I'm wrong, but if we come in and do some of that work as the town, then the bid is cheaper? Am I reading that right?
The base bid is with the town doing a portion of the work.
Okay. And then the alternative is?
The alternative is the contractor does all of it.
Oh, okay. So that would be an additional on top of...
An additional cost, correct.
Okay. I follow. Thank you. Thank you. I was confused on that. So, okay. Thank you.
So I will add, it's a fairly substantial savings with the town participating, so.
Okay. And now, Mr. Morgan, your question that you want considered is?
The council will give me permission to sign on their behalf once we go through all of the bids and find the lowest but most responsive bid to this project and to ensure that we have the proper funding to be able to do it.
That sounds good to me.
Yeah. I agree.
Do you need a motion, Mark?
I will.
I'd make... Oh, sorry.
Could I get a motion on that? A request from the town manager to sign a bid for the repaving of County Road 150 East once all bids have been reviewed?
I would make a motion that we allow Mark to sign the contract after those bids have been reviewed with Banning Engineering.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded, and will the clerk treasurer now take a roll call vote?
Greg Van Leer?
Aye.
Nancy Levitt?
Aye.
Thurs?
Aye.
Gerald?
Aye.
A vote of four to nothing, the vote the motion carries. Item A is approved. Next on the agenda is Item B, comprehensive plan.
Madam Vice President, members of the council, I come before you tonight for approval to purchase something that we've been trying to get done for probably as long as I can remember in working for the town, is to produce a comprehensive plan for the town of Danville. We sent out RFP, RFQs earlier this year. We received two proposals back. One was from this company that we have in front of you, HWC Engineering. The other was MS Consultants. We put together a board to interview both companies, and the board felt that HWC was a much better fit for the town of Danville. The price was substantially lower, which didn't make it part of the fit. It just... That was a bonus. I gave you their presentation and your packets that we sent to your houses, and I think you can see that they had done their homework. They had referenced other projects the town had done as far as other studies, and we thought that was pretty significant. The redevelopment commission, the cost of this project, I believe, is $65,000, and the redevelopment commission has agreed to throw in $29,000 to help offset the cost of this project. So the rest of this, Jenny, if I'm not mistaken, would come out of editor host?
It will come out of general professional services.
But seeking your permission tonight to go ahead and move forward, hire HWC Engineering as the company that will put together our comprehensive plan, and we have that slated to start, actually, them to start work in January. This company's pretty eager and said they would be happy to start earlier if we would like them to.
Do we have any comment about this from the council?
I suppose with the lower fee, which was a good surprise, we have no issues with our general fund covering that expense.
Jenny?
No, it's going to come from general, and then, like Mark said, the redevelopment commission agreed to pay a portion of it too out of that it. So it'll come from those two funds. Then there are sufficient funds available.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments from the council? Do I have a motion to approve Item B, a request from the town manager to hire HWC Engineering to complete the town's comprehensive plan?
Still moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Will the clerk treasurer now take a roll call vote?
Greg Van Leer?
Aye.
Nancy Levitt?
Aye.
David Winters?
Aye.
Chris Gerald?
Aye.
By a vote of four to nothing, the motion carries, and Item B is approved.
Thank you very much. We'll get started as soon as we can on this.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Next on the agenda is Item C, Resolution 8, 2020, a resolution to adopt revised council procedures. Back to you, Mr. Town Manager.
May I approach from here? Is this okay?
Yes, that's fine.
If I talk to you from here? Resolution 8, 2020 is a revised council procedures. We started to do this back in, I guess it would have been February, when the council first decided that they wanted to change the dates from Monday to Wednesday night, and everything kind of got postponed due to the COVID-19 situation. We chose to just do necessary items at the time, and unfortunately, this got put on the back burner and it stayed back there. And so I'm bringing it for you tonight. The changes, and I know I addressed some concerns from the council, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions. The changes were the dates of the meetings. I did ask for an increase in the dollar amounts that we approve internally from the 5,000 to 10, 10 to 15, up to 20. And the reason being is, honestly, if things break at the water or wastewater department, it's over $5,000 without even batting an eye. And then the other thing that was changed is we did some wording that our previous procedure stated that the council meeting would be stopped, signatures gathered on any documents before the next matter would be discussed before the council. In all the years I've been doing this, I don't know that I've ever seen that done. So you guys get your documents at the end of the meeting, and you sign them then. So we decided instead of having something that's not being followed, to just go ahead and remove it. And then the other stuff, literally, I mean, and I don't have the markup, but there were misspellings, things... I mean, there's really... There's nothing else that we changed, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
I just wanted to thank you, Mark, for entertaining us on that one, because I know I had some questions on that. So I appreciate your work and clarification on that, so.
That's my job.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments, questions? So do I have a motion to approve Item C, Resolution 8, 2020, a resolution to adopt revisions in the council procedures?
I make a motion that we approve Resolution 8-2020, revised council procedures.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Will the clerk treasurer now take a roll call vote?
Greg Van Leer?
Aye.
Nancy Levitt?
Aye.
David Winters?
Aye.
Chris Gerald?
Aye.
Thank you. By a vote of four to zero, the motion carries, and Item C is approved. Next item on the agenda is Item D, Resolution 9, 2020, a resolution to adopt the fiscal plan for the annexation of the Kindred property located at 558 Sycamore Lane.
Madam Vice President, may I request a quick leave of absence from this meeting? I'll be right back. I left something sitting on my desk. The town planner is more than welcome and capable of continuing.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. What you have before you tonight is a resolution. We have an annexation by the Kindreds coming into the town of Danville, and as part of that, they're required to do a fiscal plan. So the town did initiate that. As part of that fiscal plan, it was determined that the town does not anticipate any incremental operating costs to provide comparable service to the annexation area after the project is complete. It is an existing home, and they're wanting to hook up to Sewer and Water. This was introduced September the 2nd, so this is up for approval. And the next item on the agenda is the public hearing for the actual adoption of the annexation, which is Ordinance 27.
Okay. I understand that this now is a public hearing, right, and I'm to gavel in?
Yes.
All right. Are there any public comments? Anyone at all? All right. There being none, the public hearing is closed, and we'll take comments from the council. Do I have a motion to approve Item D, Resolution 9, 2020, a resolution to adopt the fiscal plan for annexation of 558 Sycamore Lane Kindred property?
I make a motion to approve Resolution 9, 2020.
Second it.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded, and now will the clerk treasurer please take a roll call vote?
Greg Van Leer?
Aye.
Nancy Levitt?
Aye.
Thurs?
Winters?
Aye.
Chris Gerald?
Aye.
By a vote of four to nothing, the motion carries, and item D is approved. Next on the agenda is item E, ordinance 27, 2020, annexation ordinance Kindred. And the town planner, again, please.
So you just opened a public hearing for that?
Oh, I'm sorry.
And this is just up for approval?
Oh, okay. All right. Ordinance 27, 2020.
This is the second read of this. It was brought before the council, not the last meeting, but the meeting before, for first read, and so this is your second read. It couldn't be approved until the fiscal plan was approved, the resolution, so that's why it's before you tonight.
Okay. Are there any comments from the council? Do I have a motion to approve item E, ordinance 27, 2020, an ordinance for super voluntary annexation of 558 Sycamore Lane?
Still moved. Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded, and now will the clerk treasurer please take a roll call vote?
Greg Van Leer?
Aye.
Aye.
David Winters?
Aye.
Chris Gerald?
Aye.
By a vote of four to nothing, the motion carries, item E is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is item F, park board opening.
Madam Vice President, I have spoke with council president, Mr. Pato, about this issue. If you were unaware, Kent Elliott resigned from the park board due to moving outside of the city limits, or the town limits, I apologize. But as a result, we need to replace that position. I've talked with Superintendent Lacy about this. He seems to be okay with it as well. David.
Glover.
Glover, thank you. His wife's sitting right here, I'm sorry. David Glover was appointed to the park board to fill actually a Democrats' position, because we had no Democrats apply for that position. Therefore, in speaking with council president, we believe it makes more sense for Mr. Glover to move into Mr. Elliott's position, fill the rest of his term, and then seek a Democrat to fill the actual position for the Democrat. I think our chances are a little bit better. I think the political temperature has changed. We actually had two Democrats apply for plan commission, which, I don't know that I've ever seen that occur, so. So we do have some Democrats out there that are interested in serving for the town. So because it is a, it is the council president's appointment, council president felt that it would be best suited to make this transition, that the council itself as a whole vote the movement.
Okay. Well, we're talking about appointing David Glover to replace Kent Elliott on the park board. Do I have a motion to approve item F?
Still moved.
I have a second?
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Would the clerk treasurer please take a roll call vote?
Greg Van Leer?
Aye.
Nancy Levitt?
Aye.
David Winters?
Aye.
Chris Gerald?
Aye.
All right. By a vote of four to nothing, the motion carries, and item F is approved.
Thank you. And just for the record, so no one believes that we threw Mr. Glover under the bus, we did check with him before we committed him to another three years.
That's good.
Yeah.
His wife approves of that also. All right. The next item on the agenda is item G, ordinance 28, 2020, amendment to the golf cart ordinance.
Madam Vice President, this ordinance is up for a first read. The reason we felt this ordinance was warranted is the police department, and my office and code enforcement received numerous complaints a week that we have golf carts that are on our roadways that are not in compliance with our ordinance. Therefore, we felt that the best way to enforce the ordinance is to establish a permitting or a system to warrant that we can issue these permits for the golf carts. So we'd like to be able to get this done before January 1, only because that way, really, for convenience sake, people can call while their golf carts are still in their garages, and we can go by and do an inspection and give them an inspection sticker. And the other, obviously, the other thing we have to do is, if you do approve this ordinance, not tonight, but on your second read, we have to start ordering the permits so that they can be placed on the golf carts.
Okay. Thank you very much for putting that ordinance together, and we can look at that and vote on it at another time, because it's just a first read and requires no further action tonight.
May I ask a question, madam? May I ask a question?
Yes.
Okay. So just confirming, what we're adding here is you have to get a permit and get an inspection?
That's correct.
Okay.
I think, you scroll down on there. Well, I think we did, I think we only put it like a $20 or $25. Does that sound right, Lisa?
How often is the inspection?
Once a year.
I would like to make a comment, if I may. I don't, I don't have any problem with the permitting, you know, I think that, you know, it is a little redundant to have that done, I think, every year. I think three years may be, you know, suitable or even acceptable. I mean, I'll just throw that out there for discussion. And while we're on the topic of golf carts, I would, I would like to see, you know, us look at this in depth about side-by-sides and gators and other utility vehicles as well. I mean, if we're willing to take a look at modifying that ordinance.
I agree.
We can look at all those things?
It probably would require a work study to ensure that it is something that the full council agrees with, and before we make amendments to our ordinance, I'll turn this to legal counsel. I've, I've looked at some other ordinances of other cities and towns, and adding those isn't that, really that difficult, it's just a matter of adding a word.
Correct. So it's just putting that category into your ordinance as well. Now, if you want to effectuate it with this ordinance, then we're going to have to amend this ordinance, amending it, and then so you'll take another step in there. You can also do it on a two-step tier where you're amending the permitting issue and then addressing the side-by-side issue at a subsequent, with a subsequent order, ordinance.
Wouldn't we have to amend the original one first before we amended this one?
That's what this one does.
So this ordinance amends the original ordinance, including inspections and things of that nature. If you wanted to just kind of knock everything out at one time, you would have to amend this ordinance, amending it, and then do it that way, or take it in that two-step approach.
Okay.
Would, I mean, with discussion, modifying this ordinance to say that that inspection would need to take place maybe every two or three years instead of every year, would we have to revamp this, or do we approve it as it is and then amend this amendment separately? It depends on how you want to do it. I think the cleanest way would be to make an amendment to this, to incorporate language about every other year, or every third year, or however you want to do that, because we're tackling the inspection section now and the permitting, and then handle it that way. But yeah, to do that, you would need to amend this ordinance as well.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments on this subject? All right. Next item on the agenda is item H, ordinance 29, 2020, ordinance to amend the 2020 budget. Clerk Treasurer, please.
This is the ordinance to approve and amend the budget from the discussions that we've had in the work studies in the last council meeting, that these are the decreases in the funds that the department heads presented. And this is just first read, you don't have to approve it tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Jenny, I have a quick question, if I may, Ms. Vice President.
Yes.
Jenny, just for clarification, this amendment 29-2020 is to amend the 2020 budget that was approved sometime in maybe October, November of 2019, correct?
Correct.
And then, as we move forward with the next item, and I don't want to jump the gun on, but other, other amendments can be made to an approved budget. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
All right. This is a public hearing. Are there any public comments?
The public hearing will be actually for ordinance 30.
Oh, for I, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so what we just looked at, that ordinance to amend, is it just the first read, and so the next item on the agenda is item I, ordinance 30, 2020, 2021 budget ordinance, and now this is a public hearing. Are there any public comments? Ordinance 30, 2020.
It was so large that we had to actually separate it out.
Okay.
Sorry. We noticed.
Here we go. Any public comments on this? That being the case, this public hearing is closed. This is up for first read and requires no further action tonight. All right. Are there any comments from council or staff? Any reports of the activities the last couple of weeks?
I got plenty, but I'll, I'll acquiesce to the council first.
I'll just make a couple of quick comments, and I don't mean to steal any David's thunder, but I participated in the, I know, keep, keep an eye on me. I participated in the Parks Department board meeting the other day, and I appreciate the, you know, you allowing me to tag along on those, but I just want to say that in Mr. Elliott's absence, that Tammy Dooley has done one heck of a job running that meeting, and I think she deserves recognition on that, so, you know, I just wanted to make, make sure that gets passed along.
Well, I don't know if you're going to say anything about this, but if so, I apologize. I attended two ribbon cuttings this afternoon. One was at the, the retirement home, Woodland, Woodland, yeah, and then another one in downtown Danville. The names are escaping me, that's probably pretty bad.
Radiance or?
Radiance.
Radiance, Radiance Scan, there you go.
You're going to go there a lot.
They could offer me no assistance.
My, my daughter had to tag along with me, and of course, she was asking for stuff in there, so she's, she wants to go back, but I think it's really neat to see businesses coming, coming to Danville, and I think that they'll, they'll both serve very good purposes. One will house our elderly population and hopefully bring others from outside of Danville, and the other one might make us all look better. But no, it's, it's really neat to see what's happening in our, in our town, and I think, hopefully, it's just the tip of the iceberg after kind of a slow go at it with COVID and everything, so I hear there might be more coming down the pike very soon, but we just hope that we keep going that direction, so, good stuff.
I don't mean to inject, but I found out that the central normal tap room is opening, is a soft opening tomorrow, and I think that'll make us all look good, too.
It just got scheduled for next Friday.
There you go, okay.
There you go.
Central normal tap room, ribbon cutting next Friday?
Yep.
All right. Mr. Gerald, do you have any comments?
I just want to kind of reiterate what's been said up here already. Kelly, I want to thank you for what you've been doing for the town as the chamber representative. And Lisa and I had a brief conversation before the meeting tonight, and just everything that's on tap, what's going on, I mean, we're definitely moving in that direction, and it couldn't have happened without all you leaders out there, so thank you.
Ready for me? I'm ready to go.
Sure.
All right. Public Works, or I met with all department heads Monday, virtually. Public Works had a wedding on the bridge this weekend. I will forward pictures to all of you. I wanted to announce it first, but they did send some pictures, it's really kind of neat. They met with pavers to start getting estimates for the Community Crossings grant, and he is getting ready to put out a, an offer of employment to a new laborer. I didn't ask who it was, I figured that's his business, and he'll let me know when he's ready to let me know. So, Police Department, over the weekend, had done six OWI arrests, they had the concert on the square, they did the homecoming parade, they found a gun over at Walmart that they're still not sure who it belongs to, and they are dealing with a fairly high-profile runaway case, so.
A what case?
A runaway case.
Oh, good. Thank you.
The water department's reading meters, they finally were able to fix a valve at the county highway garage that in their estimate had been, it was probably 60 years old, and it took a great deal of force. They've been doing some work on Martin Drive, on some new development there, and they're still, if you haven't been through the park, the well diggers are right there by the swinging bridge doing some test wells. Sorry, Will.
It's loud.
Yeah. Wastewater, they've been working on the VAC truck to get it repaired, they've been putting together their annual reports, they've also been working on Martin Drive for a development there, and they've been working on some of the issues that they're getting ready to face with the jail, with that development, the new jail, and they have a pump that's gone out. I actually have that on the agenda for next meeting, for capital expenditure request. It's actually going to be probably a next year purchase, because this pump's going to have to come from Canada, so it's going to take a while for us to get this thing. Parks Department, they've been getting ready for Winterland, working on the front sign. If you've not seen it, he's got a sidewalk and trail survey out, so if anybody's available, please, we need your responses on these things, because it's really going to dictate how we spend food and beverage money, and we want to do it right. We've got some projects that we know, that we think are appropriate to help put several communities together, but we want to see what the rest of the town thinks and see if it's the same way that we're thinking, so.
What's the deadline on the, the?
Survey? It's the end of the month.
End of the month.
By the end of the month?
I, I took that survey the other day, and it's very well put together.
And if anyone from the, if anyone needs a copy of it, any of us can forward you a copy, or Will, or Mark?
Will's been attending the AIM Idea Summit along with Lisa, myself, and I think Jenny, I don't know that anybody else has been doing it, it's virtual this year, which has been extremely unusual, but still, I think, I think AIM has done an outstanding job putting this together in light of everything that's been going on. And then, Will, I can't read my chicken scratch, but you got 12 bike racks through a grant, is that correct?
Yep.
And you're looking for places to put the bike racks? So if someone wants a bike rack, let us know, and, and we'll kind of go from there if, if there's an appropriate place to put it, so. Planning Department has been working on Superior Laminary Plats, and we're getting ready to have a meeting tomorrow, reference a traffic study to see if a proposed subdivision on the west edge of town, how it will affect us. But mind you, no one's annexed in, so. Fire Department, 1,243 runs for the year, they were also involved in the homecoming parade, concert on the square, and October is a busy month for them. They do their annual hose testing, and then also it's fire prevention month, so I'm sure they'll be in the schools pretty hot and heavy, as much as the schools will let them in, I assume, so. But they'll be doing their best to go after that. As far as the admin, our admin division's concerned, I'm excited to announce to you that under the CARES grant, we were notified earlier this week that we are receiving $23,000. Melin Heron is our grant writer that's been working on that, and tomorrow she'll be submitting for another, probably close to 209. $290,000, that we're pretty sure that she's going to be successful in getting. So, we're getting some grants already and getting some grant money in, and we're excited about it. So...
Good.
That's all I have. I attended the ribbon cuttings today, and I'm real excited about everything that's going on. And I haven't excluded one person by choice, but he's got so much, I'm going to let him talk. That's right. Give us a brief synopsis. Barry has had so much going on with sinkholes. I told you I was going to do this. But, he has had so many sinkholes in the town, and he has been truly working. He worked diligently to make sure that the parade route was open, to be honest with you. He put in some extra time to make sure that he could get the parade route covered, so it was safe for the floats and everything to go down. So, Barry, if you can just give me a quick synopsis of what you've been doing.
Real quick, every road that you see is destroyed in the town, it's probably me. But, we're having a little bit of troubles with some old pipes. We're having to reroute them. Mark's been in the loop the whole time. The unfortunate thing is the budgets, these are unexpected items, so you might see a couple of line items go over. I'm on the last leg. We found out today that there's a lateral in the way, so now we've got to stop, get a different structure, move it around. So, we need to work around it, because on Kentucky Street, there's a lot of pipes in the middle of the road. It's going to require leaving those alone, because if we touch them, we're going to find other stuff and then have to work on that. The Public Works Department's done a really good job about putting sidewalks back in, so we're making sure that we do ADA compliance. But other than that, I mean, we've really been busy. There is actually seven commercial sites that are going in right now, or they're going to be breaking ground in the next month. 14 new single-family homes in the last three weeks. So, it's going to be crazy busy this fall. I just ask you guys to be patient with me. I got two quotes for paving those areas that we've tore up. We have to get another quote for the last one, and those are going to be the big numbers. We've done a good job staying as close in the budget as we can, but this last sinkhole's really created a big problem for the budget. So, just be aware of that, and I'll keep Mark posted and try to get some numbers to you guys as soon as I can get them.
Staff, for just a second, because utilities, again, are very new to me, obviously. I didn't deal with utilities when I was fire chief. But, Barry has the money. It's just that what he was anticipating spending out of that budget, he's going to exceed. So, you will see his budget probably turn upside down before the end of the year. But, it's not that he's got the money on hand. Is that, am I saying that right, Jenny?
Yes, that's correct.
So, I just wanted to make sure that nobody, when they saw his numbers, went, "Holy smoke." So, I'm just, I'm trying to save Barry some grief.
I'll still call you.
That's okay. Please do. I like explaining that stuff. Really, that's all. It's really fun. It's been busy. The days go by quick, and I just appreciate everybody's support, especially all the departments. They've really helped out. It's taken everybody, and the town manager, assistant town manager as well. So, thanks.
Very good. Will, do you have anything to report?
The only thing I had was, I will be coming to you, hopefully, next council meeting on that Plan B trail. We did that first phase in the front. We want to complete the other side. I'm waiting on a pavement estimate. So, I should have that ready for you by next meeting, and then we'll start moving forward.
Okay.
Will, when you said you were getting ready for Winterland, are we expecting an increase in traffic this year due to COVID and people staying more local?
Kelly and I have already met several times, and we've got a unique game plan. I think you'll find epic.
I like how you think, okay.
We're going to change the things up, and we're also adding days onto the front. We're going with the big box store strategy, where everybody's excited about Christmas a little bit ahead of time. So, we're hoping to capitalize a little bit on that excitement. So, it's going to be open the weekend before Thanksgiving now. So, that'll be something new and kind of a little different.
And Madam Vice President, I didn't ask Mrs. Pierce if she had anything. I'm sorry.
I don't. Thank you.
Chief Roberts, did you want to say something?
Yes, please.
I think, I think I know what he's going to talk about.
Danville Fire Department's very excited that we took delivery of a Safe Haven baby box today. It's going to be a, it's going to be a tool in our toolbox that we hope we never have to use. Tomorrow, I meet with a local contractor to get it scheduled to be put in. I'm also working with a local alarm company to donate the monthly fee for the alarm for the baby box. I just wanted to report that to the council. So, also Fred Harris in the crowd here
Way to go, Fred.
Has been working very hard to seek donations for this, and so we raised the funds. But, we're still seeking donations for maintenance and keeping the project going. So, I'll keep you guys posted on the progress of the box. So, thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Fred.
That's all I have, Madam Vice President.
Okay. Claim docket, any comments from the council?
Move to approve the claim docket.
Do I have a second?
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded. Would the clerk treasurer please take the roll call vote?
Craig Van Leer?
Aye.
Nancy Levitt?
Aye.
David Winters?
Aye.
Chris Gerald?
Aye.
By a vote of four to zero, the claim docket is approved. And if there are no more items on tonight's agenda, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. I don't think we need to take a roll call on this.
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned.
We do have to say all in favor.